Good evening, everyone. I'll open our committee of the whole meeting here at 6:00 PM in council chambers. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Murphy.
President.
Masias.
President.
Rozak.
President.
Timian.
President.
Finch.
President.
McNeil.
President.
Castro.
President.
Schmidt.
President.
All right, we do not have any remote electronic attendance. So we start with an oath of office for appointment of Bill Atkins to city attorney. Bill, would you join me up here after Mr. Vita says a few words?
Sure. Gives me great pleasure to introduce William, or Bill Atkins, to the city of Moline, to the mayor, to the city council, to our city staff, and to this community. Bill comes to us by way of Peoria, where he spent almost his entire career, basically, from graduating from Loyola University. See, I remember where you got your law degree, from Loyola University, and prior to that, Ball State, and originally from Indiana, actually. And so he spent many, many years working in Tazewell County, as well as having a private practice for about a dozen years, ten years, and wanting to get back into government. And finding this opportunity available presented his credentials to us. And after a lengthy search, we're pleased to have Bill joining the City of Moline team in Moline. And I know he's excited to be here. So, welcome to the community, Bill.
Thank you.
This is for you. If you would please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, William Atkins.
I, William Atkins.
Having been duly appointed.
Having been duly appointed.
To the position of city attorney.
To the position of city attorney.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
Will strictly adhere to the Illinois rules of professional conduct.
Will strictly adhere to the Illinois rules of professional conduct.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of city attorney.
Of the position of city attorney.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations on welcoming. We generally have you greet everyone, or everyone greet you, so you can keep that. Go ahead and do that if you'd like.
Quick handshake. I wanted to just very quickly thank everyone, the staff here that I've met so far, who've been wonderful. I have really enjoyed my time, even though it's only been a week here, I've really enjoyed my time here, and I think this is going to be wonderful, at least for me, and I hope for all of you as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We move to number five, board appointments. A new appointment, mayor's appointment of Ashley Gomez to Citizens Advisory Council on Urban Policy, CACUP Board, for a three-year term to expire July 31st, 2027. And just a note about Ms. Gomez, I had been given an idea from a sitting member of CACUP that we have someone who is a renter on that council. You know, when we're talking about urban policy, I was really pleased that Ms. Gomez reached out and was interested, and that is the case for her, so we are happy to welcome her to that committee. And the mayor's reappointment of Jokel Ning to the Human Rights Commission for a two-year term to expire August 31st, 2026. The mayor's reappointment of Betsy Swanson to the Human Rights Commission for a two-year term to expire August 31st, 2026. Any questions? Okay, hearing none, we move to our first presentation, 6.1 South Slope Improvement. Mr. Brown.
Thank you, everyone. So in 2020, the South Slope wastewater treatment plant received an NPDS permit that required us to lower our phosphorus limits quite substantially by the year of 2023. So in 2021, based upon the low limits that were going to be needed, the age of the facility, safety, and expected future regulations, the city engaged with Strand Engineering, an engineering firm that specializes in wastewater treatment and design, to kind of rehab and redesign the South Slope wastewater plant. Since 2021, many things have changed. Inflation has increased, labor has increased, and there's been even some unforeseen surprises that we found with past renovations. So what we're going to have today is Troy Stinson from Strand Engineering is going to give a broad overview of where we started, where we're at, and then potential options for the future.
Thank you, Charlie. My name is Troy Stinson, I'm with Strand Associates. I've been at Strand for over 30 years. I worked on the North Slope treatment plant, went through that design and construction of that successful project. So I'm very familiar with Moline, I grew up in this area, so I hold it near and dear to my heart, this community. With that, as Charlie did a good introduction, really, I'm trying to familiarize everyone with the new modifications, kind of the project, I think a few of the council members ordered around when we presented in 2022 during the facilities plan. So the first part's kind of why we need the treatment plant, and then secondly, kind of where we're at, and how we can proceed. So the presentation outline, this is just an arrow view of the existing South Slope facility, which is by South Slope Mall. There's, I want to go over the project goals, the treatment plant history, what's really the need and project drivers besides phosphorus removal. I want to talk about, I think in everyone's mind today, is what's the updated opinion of probable cost? I think that's the biggest concern. But we also want to talk about the IEPA loan financing requirements, and then next steps in schedule. So that's kind of our outline. So what's, one of the goals of the treatment plant project, we want to implement processes to meet regulatory requirements. So as Charlie said, we have new phosphorus removal limits coming into play. IEPA is always changing those, you guys have heard of PFAS, you've heard of ammonia, those are all coming down the road, but for now, you're dealing with the phosphorus limit. We want to improve the efficiencies and reliability by replacing aging equipment and processes. So I'll have a few slides on the actual age of the facility. We want to modernize the facility to meet current design and code standards, codes have changed substantially since 1980, when the last major expansion was done. We also want to provide confident direction for the next several decades, so when we do facilities planning, it's usually over a 20-year period, we want to be able to set the plant up so it's easily expanded in 20 years, if it needs to meet new regulations. And then finally, we want to maintain room and flexibility for future upgrades. So this is our overview of the history of construction, shown in green. The facility was originally constructed in 1950, the regulations were a lot different then. You basically had to saddle sledge and you could take it to the river. So that's where you see some of these structures. What's interesting is some of those existing structures we're dealing with today. In the 1960s, there is an activated sledge expansion, and then in 1980, in the rectangle, or the red boxes, that's where most of the last improvements. So if you think about it, even since the 1980s, the plant's 40 to 60 years old. So it's, a useful life of equipment in a treatment plant might be 20 years generally, and concrete might be 30 to 50 years. So it's definitely served its purpose. So one of the, we kind of nailed down the five main drivers of the project, regulatory requirements, nutrient removal, the plant age and deficiencies, we want to consolidate parallel processes to simplify operations. So the plant's designed for two separate, two separate plants. And what they used to do back in the day is kind of add on and add on things to a treatment plant to expand them. So Greg's operating an RBC fixed film plant and an activated sledge plant, which is complex because you're running, actually running two plants. You have to, we want to improve the safety, accessibility, operability, and reliability of the plant. And as always, we want to be energy efficient, and we want to not only save capital costs, but we want to keep our operational costs in the future down. So this is some random photos of the treatment plant, and it just shows kind of the age, maybe many of you have been out there, and a lot of these are detailed pieces of equipment, but I just kind of want to show that the photo on the left is the clarifier, this is where the wastewater settles. That clarifier has reached its useful life. We actually had one clarifier with a center column, you can see, actually failed and broke. And so that puts you out of commission for a while, so things are in need of replacement. Below is the grit system, which is, is there a laser pointer on this? It probably doesn't work on the TV, right? Okay. The bottom left is a picture of the grit system, which isn't working, so grit is one of the first remaining steps, removes all the fines in the sand and the coffee, which is damaging the pumps. That's not operational at the plant, there's no grit removal because the system doesn't work. Then the photo in the, in the middle is the anaerobic digesters, and anaerobic digesters basically take the sludge that's produced from wastewater treatment plant, breaks it down so you don't have as much to dispose, and produces a methane gas, and you can use that gas to heat the digester. So what you're seeing there is the gas piping that's in the space, common space, that gas piping, that currently doesn't meet code, that needs to be isolated, the grid, the condensation traps need to be in a special room, that's a new code requirement that maybe wasn't during 1980s. So that needs to be corrected. And then I remember I talked to you about two different plants, there's the RBC plant that treats the wastewater, and there's the activated sledge plant. So the picture on the right, which has got a bunch of grease through it, is these RBCs, and these RBCs turn, and they basically remove the organic material from the wastewater. And I think you've had quite a few bearing failures over the years, numerous bearing failures. And RBC technology really isn't being used for nutrient removal. So the existing treatment plant is overly complex, and it's incapable of meeting regulatory requirements. So your existing treatment plant has 15 liquid processes, and I'm not going to necessarily bore you with all the details of what it uses, but basically, you can kind of see there's two separate plants, it's got two separate pump stations, it's got a fine screen and a grit grinder, and activated RBCs, and it uses chlorine for disinfection. Neither of those processes really can meet the current, or the total phosphorus limits currently, or total nitrogen, which is a future requirement with ammonia from IEPA potentially in the future. So the plan was to simplify the treatment plant. So we have nine liquid processes, so we're eliminating six unit processes, the plant's going to produce better quality effluent because of technology. So we're basically consolidating the process, so we're removing the RBCs and expanding the activated sledge system, that's the basis of the project. And we're also providing UV disinfection instead of chlorine, because UV disinfection is safer, you don't have to have the chlorine gas, and it does just as good a job or better for disinfecting the effluent. So one of the other key considerations is to improve safety, accessibility, operability, reliability. So the picture on the left, you can see there's a hoist, and there's a cable system, you can barely see it in that photo. And you see the photo on the bottom right, that's the screen, so one of the first steps of the treatment plant is to remove the rags that come in, because those clog pumps, clog pipes. So in order for the, so those screenings get removed from the wastewater, all that material is two or three flights down, and the operating staff puts them in a 55-gallon plastic bucket and hoists them up manually, up through two stories, which isn't safe. And it's not typically what you would do on a modern facility, you have a screen that's 30 feet deep and invades the screening to the first floor, and it goes into a dumpster. So that's just one point of some of the things. The middle picture is the excess flow pumping station, I don't know if you can see that, but basically, in order to fix those pumps, today, we would have guide rails on this pump, so if a pump goes out, you would lift them off the guide rail, you don't have to enter the wet well. And these basically require you to take off a few things before you can even pull the pumps. So I'm not sure why it was designed that originally, but that's something that we've identified as an issue. And then finally, there's a lot of steps and stairs, you can see there that don't have handrail, it's a minor thing, but you know, you want to try to improve that to get to different places throughout the plant. Sorry, my mouth is dry. I think I got in my bag. Excuse me. So the existing administration building, that's the one that was from the 1950s, right? Most, some of it? It's really not functional, it doesn't meet current code requirements, and it's in a flood-prone area. So just looking at the photos there, you know, they've been, the staff's been able to kind of adopt this building, the building houses the inflow pumps, there's MCCs in it, there's office space, you can see some of the tiles that are frying there, or they're breaking up. And it's really not very organized, it's kind of a, you know, we may do with this house with a million different rooms in it, that's aged. So what I wanted to do is show kind of a comparison between what we assumed during our planning study in 2021 versus kind of where we're at today. Kind of like Charlie said, some things changed throughout the design, which is typical. When you do a plan, it's a high-level look at the, at the plan, you don't have rock, you don't have all the information when you do a high-level study. So there was some animation on here, but it seemed like it went away. Okay, that's okay. You ruined my thunder, animation. So I'm just going to step through it, it's fine, I appreciate you doing that. So the site demolition part, you can see in the red, that was what was originally planned to be demoed for the, for the plan. So we have the older stuff, if you can see, it's really some of the 1950s, 1970s structures, which makes sense, right? You try to remove the old and keep, keep what's salvageable. So our plan, we feel is the right plan because it kept some of your facilities, and I'll have some slides on the stuff we can reuse. So basically, what's shown in the red X is what we planned to be demoed as part of the plan. Well, we found out, and what's in a different color, which is the white or light blue Xs, those were the structures that we had to demo during design because of concerns with flooding, flood elevations, which I'll get to in a little bit, if that makes sense. And so we ended up not being able to reuse as many structures as we thought during planning, is the key there. The other thing we do is, what's overlaid here is the activated sledge, which is where the blue and the light blue is, we were going to reuse those eration tanks because we were going to expand half of them, so I'm going to try to go back, oh, I don't have that. Well, the animation would have shown that, but basically, the activated sledge tank, where it's light blue, we were planning on reusing that and just adding like half the eration tanks, we had to replace the entire eration tanks because they weren't structurally sound to be able to raise the walls of those structures. They were designed back in the day where they didn't account, they probably didn't know they'd have to raise the walls. So basically, what I have shown is this is the major plant improvement. So we have site demolition, again, I talked about it, and it's in blue, is the new versus the expanded activated sledge tanks. We have a new inflow pumping and preliminary treatment building, which is on the bottom part of the graph, it's that square, that stayed basically the same as the plan. We have new final clarifiers, which are up on the right-hand side, the right corner. Those basically settle the wastewater, so if you see the structures to the left, those are your existing final clarifiers, we were able to reuse those and add final clarifiers to the right. We have a new biosol's handling building, but we had to add the last storage tank to it on the right because that was one of the structures we could not reuse during design. We have new ultraviolet disinfection, a new operations building, a maintenance garage. And then we have a new blower building and sledge pumping building. So the blower building, we don't have a pointer here, but the blower building is the farthest blue X that you see, see that spot there? The blower building was installed below the 100-year, or the floodplain, it's in the floodplain, it's installed at a low elevation where it's susceptible to flooding, to high flood events. Well, your blowers are very critical to your project, because if you don't have blowers, you don't have activated sledge. So basically, that had to be located at a higher elevation. And then the new chemical phosphorus removal. So the major changes, I guess, that we found out during design, because I'll talk a little bit about it in a little bit, was because of the flood, was the activated sledge tanks, we had to, couldn't reuse that half, and we couldn't use some structures for fermentation and last storage tanks, and then the new blower building and sledge pumping building. So the recommended plan included reuse or repurpose of several structures to reduce overall project cost. So again, I'm just kind of reiterating this point, if you look at this, the primary clarifiers, which are shown in red down below, they had to raise the walls higher than originally planned, because the original plant wasn't designed to discharge at the 100-year flood elevation. That's a kind of a key component, I think everyone needs to understand that. So back in 1980, they designed, designed the plant to pass the flow, so you need your plant to be operational at all times, right? It's a treatment plant, it can't not work when there's a flood. When the river's at the highest stage, it has to flow out. And that's a requirement by IEPA. IEPA code requires you to design these facilities at a minimum at the 25-year flood elevation, but we like to design them to be operational at the 100-year flood elevation, it's just good design practice. So some, some data with you, the existing plant hydraulics, we went back, we found them on an old drawing that we were provided, and the plant was designed for what it just called a high river elevation, and we don't know where that data came from. Back then, maybe they just saw a high water line on a bridge or something, but that elevation was 567.69. Well, the 100-year flood elevation is two to three feet higher than that. So that existing plant was not designed according to IEPA code, so that meant we had to raise all the structures that we were using and elevate the hydraulic profile. Does that make sense to everyone? So that was a change we didn't know during planning, which ended up costing, well, it ended up costing additional money. However, now you're going to have a plant that it can operate at the 100-year flood elevation, so that's a positive. So that's a, kind of a big component. I think I talked about everything that was there. That's a better picture of the blower building and the activated sledge tanks that we couldn't So the big, the big thing today is, okay, what, and what's in front of you, why we're here today, is we have a debt authorization ordinance in front of you. And that debt authorization ordinance, the purpose of that debt authorization ordinance is that it sets the maximum amount of money that you can borrow from IEPA, from their low, from their low-interest loan funding. So you don't want your debt authorization to be too low, because if you need additional funds, and they're potentially available, which I have a slide on later, that's kind of where you're at. So that's kind of why we're here today, we wanted to explain the additional costs compared to planning, what that reasoning is, and this slide basically talks about the opinion of probable cost and some of those increases. So I just talked about the flood elevation, the original plant was not designed based on the 100-year flood elevation, existing structures needed to be raised for both hydraulic reasons. We also have to, your city ordinance requires us to have all the buildings at three feet above the 100-year flood elevation for protection, so many of those structures weren't designed for that ordinance. So that's defined for critical structures, and if it's a non-critical structure, it has to be a foot above the 100-year flood. So for some structures that didn't store chemicals, and we didn't consider them critical, we used the three feet, and for others, we used one, with discussion with staff and your staff here. We also couldn't reuse the existing structures, so we couldn't reuse the existing structures, couldn't use the blower building, the eration tanks, the last storage, the fermenter, we had to raise the walls of the other structures higher than originally planned. So basically, we started during planning at $70 million was our cost in 2021. As Charlie said, a lot of things have changed since 2021, which is on the bottom. Finding contractors, just cost for construction has went through the roof, and I think we're all very aware of that. So what we, what we did is, early in the project, around the 60% level, which was around September of this year, was where we reached about 60% completion, we basically indicated that the flood elevations, reuse of the existing structures was going to take the project up to 80 to 85 million, and I think, Charlie, you mentioned that, you presented that to a council at some point in September, I believe. So that's just, so at that point, we're at 80 to 85 million, at about 60% design because of the first two items. The other thing we found out is, we had a, we, you guys are familiar with Build America, Buy America compliance, for any IEPA loan or any federal equivalency project, they make you, they require you to use, build, basically applies all manufactured products, steel and electrical PLCs, so all these manufacturers have to basically make their product, most of their product in America. If that makes sense to everyone? Which is great, I'm all for that, but what that did is, a lot of the wastewater equipment, especially equipment, and it's made in other countries, so most of this, a lot of this equipment's made in Germany and other parts of the country. So what happened is, during the project, we thought we had a waiver for BABA compliance, EPA basically said any projects on this fiscal year has to meet BABA, and what we did is, we're getting equipment costs coming in that were increasing by 50% to comply with Build, Buy America, Build America. So that UV system I talked to you about, our original costs were $300,000, it's, it came in at $700,000, you know, in our estimates. So that was estimated, if you take, it's hard to estimate the full, complete picture of BABA, but that could have added about $5 million to the project, because 15% of the equipment, and, and it's not just equipment, because it applies to the PLCs. Can you imagine, there's not any PLCs or electrical that's really made in America, so they, all these manufacturers had to basically switch gears and try to source their materials and do their labor in America. It's like 55% is what they're required to do. So we were getting those equipment costs in between 60 and 90%, and a lot of the manufacturers were telling us, we don't know if we can even meet BABA. So there was a point in time where we were like, gosh, can we even build this treatment plant and comply with BABA, because some of these equipment manufacturers said we might not be able to comply. So between 60 and 90%, then that's between September and December 31st, so that timeline was compressed because, as you saw, some of the changes we had to make to the design, we had to raise walls, we had to rebuild structures, but we still wanted to get this project out so that you could comply with the funding, it needs to go out to bid by February 15th. So we really compressed our schedule to meet that deadline. So we got a lot of work done between September 15th and December 31st. And then, along that time, we had some projects that bid. Ames, Iowa, New Lennox, Illinois, Cedar Rapids, and what we were finding with those bids is, I'm just kind of skipping down, but one of the big components is the electrical cost of a project, and the interior, exterior piping cost have increased significantly, copper's at an all-time high. So when these projects came in in late 2024, like our Ames bid, I think the electrical was $7 million more than we anticipated. So we included a higher factor for electrical because we were trying to compensate for these recent bids. And we want to give you this price because we want to go into this debt authorization ordinance, at least giving you some idea of what the cost can be now versus after it bids, and saying, oh, we didn't think that was just going to happen. So we, our best interest is to try to give, give you the, at least the best of our ability of this information. Granted, it feels like it's probably coming late in the game, I'll admit that, and I'm sure that's been a surprise for most of you. But that, a lot of this information was coming to us late in the game, we were doing a lot between 60 and 90% on the design to, to make this project a goal for you. The other thing we noticed during the 60 to 90% stage is the piping on this project. So what people don't understand is, when you're doing a wastewater project, you see that aerial view of all those structures, there is so much underground piping on this site, from remember the 15 processes that they have, all that's connected, and unfortunately, we're not going to move the treatment plant because it's in that spot, and it's hard to cite a treatment plant, we're not going to be able to move it to the ballpark in La Torre. And it needs, so we were basically, we have to construct this treatment plant and keep the existing plant going, and it's going to be a challenge. So the last two bullet points are really the major increase of why it went from 85 to now it's a projected $100 million project. Again, as an engineer, it's really difficult right now to predict the bidding climate. We're seeing one bidder, two bidders on a project, we're seeing other projects, not even our projects, where the engineer's opinion of probable cost is much lower than how it bids. Cedar Rapids is an example of a project. And so we wanted to take that into account, because contractors, if they're not hungry, they don't need the work, they'll bid on your project, but they're going to increase their overhead, they're going to increase their profit. That's what's happened, we're seeing that. We're seeing projects coming in at 100 million, and it's a big number for a treatment plant, probably one of the biggest projects you've done. Other communities nearby, New Lennox was 130 million, I think Clinton was not our project, but I think they're at over $100 million a couple of years ago for a couple phases of their treatment plant. And I think Cedar Rapids was 300, 350. Not that you're Cedar Rapids, but just to give you some comparison of where things have went. So because of that, we increased the cost due to, since 2021, COVID inflation, supply chain, labor shortages, and contractors workload. So there's been, I kind of repeat this, but there's been less bidders on recent projects at times, only one or two. So we increased the contingency due to the current bidding climate. So our contingency factor is when we do a opinion of probable cost, we don't get subcontractor equipment, we don't spend, you know, 45 days continuously putting these bids together, we basically provide our opinion of probable cost based on past projects and some unit costs. What it doesn't factor in is the current bidding climate, if we're going to get one bidder or two, it's basically the unit prices are developed based on a competitive bid. As you know, insurance costs are going up, so there's overhead profit, insurance and bonding. So the, if you want some deltas here, so the first two might be around $10 million for, $7 million for the first two items, maybe five for BABA. And then, we added $12.5 million for the electrical piping to the project because of the recent bids. So we didn't change anything, we didn't add extras to this plan. We just accounted for some of the piping costs and the electrical costs that we were seeing late in the, late, late in the project. So that added 12 and a half, and then we increased the contingency by 7 million because of the uncertainty if we're going to get one bidder or two. So that's kind of the delta, does that make sense in general terms to everyone? So that's kind of the delta. Does that make sense in general terms to everyone? Um I think everyone, and the other thing I wanted to point out is um Engineering News Record is a, a. A magazine that engineers read probably as well, but they have this building cost index.
It's really exciting.
Yeah, it's really exciting. Yeah, um and it has this building cost index and this cost index basically goes back, I don't know, long time, nineteen ninety maybe to twenty twenty five. And what it does is it tracks building costs around the nation. And the inflation alone, and that's not all these other factors that added the cost was thirty percent. I mean, I think you see it. It's like, it's hard to get a contractor to work on your house. It's hard to get a good price down. So thirty percent inflation was a big part of this jump. And then we increased the contingency. So I want to stop there because I think this is an important item. And I want to make sure I address everyone's concern or I can keep going. But you want me to keep going? Okay, thanks. Bob told me to keep going. Hopefully I explained that very well.
Yeah, we got it.
Makes sense.
I was seeing all good nods.
Okay, thanks. So here, so here's some positive news. I E P A financing requirements. So what I have a picture on the right is the Water Pollution Control Intended Use Plan. And every year the intended use plan comes out. And the intended use plan comes out in July and it basically is um, a lot of communities are looking forward to this document. Because it tells you if you're gonna get funding or not. And a lot of communities aren't getting funded at all. So if you look at this, um why do you want to use the I E P A financing? Well, you're on the intended use plan for seventy-three and a half million dollars. It's been reserved on the um intended use plan. Which if you look at the intended use plan, there's about fifty projects on this intended use plan that are getting funded. You're number twenty-five and your value is seventy-three and a half million is a, is probably the highest of the fifty of being able to get money. So I know when we were, Tony and Greg, we were very tickled pink when we found out that we were on this list. Because we, we were able to talk with I E P A to increase your loan funding score. So you might ask, well, why are some communities on there, some not? Basically on your loan priority score and we worked with I E P A to get your loan priority score up to four sixty. We had to. Uh kind of throw in some favors, but we were very happy that we were able to get that up. All right. It's very competitive program. The total available funds is six hundred million. Seems like a lot of money, but it's not. Typically, there's only four to five hundred million, so it's actually increased. The total needs in the state, you can see that down in the back, bottom, bottom corner, is two point four billion. And that's just wastewater. That's not even on the water side. So there's two point four billion worth of need, six hundred and twelve thousand, or six hundred and twelve thousand. Six hundred and twelve million at the right is reserve funds that you, that you're on that list. Six hundred million people wanted funds, but there was no money left because they didn't score high enough. And then there's about uh nine hundred eighty-one million of projects that have planning approval, but their construction date was estimated after March thirty first of twenty twenty five. So the key point is and the why we tried to compress the design schedule even with these changes to try to get this ready to bid. Is we must, if you want to, it, we have, we, we have money reserved for the fiscal year twenty twenty four, right, or twenty twenty five. Fiscal year. We must advertise around mid-February. So that means we gotta go out to bid in February fifteenth because you, they're required to have a forty-five day bid period because you have to solicit N B E W B. So that means we open bids around March because by, between March and June thirtieth, you have to submit, you have to pass. All your ordinance is, you have basically uh to intend to apply, to order the project. And I E P A takes time to do the laundry. And that's kind of their minimum. You can maybe push it a little bit. So you can see how it was just like, we, we got this reserve funding. Um we need to keep going with the project so that we can go out to bid. Is that pretty clear on the loan? So when I was up at this council of April of twenty twenty-two, um our total project cost during planning was seventy million. Um at the time, you know, we didn't think inflation was going where it was at. Um but we did assume a two percent interest rate over twenty years. When we did that analysis and it's in the plan. So that annual principal and interest payment was four point two eight million dollars a year. I just wanted to keep, keep that in mind. That was in twenty twenty-two. And then we can talk about this, but that's not the intent. Coal Valley and East Moline do, do share some of the debt service because you, I do, you do provide wastewater treatment. And it's roughly nine and eleven percent. At the time, we had eight point nine and eleven point one. So they would be allocated a portion of that debt because of their allocation capacity, because they have capacity at the plant. So now you might be saying, all right, we're at a hundred and ten million total opinion probable cost. The debt authorization ordinance you have in front of you, I think, was for a hundred and twenty million because we wanted to have an additional buffer um in case bids. You know, um there's no, the debt authorization ordinance doesn't commit you to borrowing any money. It's just allows you to borrow that money if you feel you need it. I want to make sure that's clear. The only, that's not, you're not making a decision to borrow that much money tonight. Okay, you're just authorizing debt so that if you need that funding. You can potentially get it. All right. So our I E P A loan funding has changed. What they did do is they allowed, and it's new. Um they allowed the principal and interest payment to be over a thirty-year period, which really helps a lot. And the interest rate is currently one point eight seven percent. There's an environmental discount that you can get a point two percent if you um basically show that the project's related to nutrient removal. So we're. We're gonna do that, request that additional point two percent discount for you. Um so what's the best, I guess, a good scenario? And again, these scenarios, you know, it, that we'll find out more after bids because. And I want, if we decided, you know, that, that's gonna be a day that'll be interesting as well when bids come in. So the first scenario is if we receive additional funding through I E P A. So let's say, um you know that list I talked to you about, there's six hundred million dollars available. What happens is if projects on that list aren't ready to proceed, which happens more often than you think. That money gets bypassed to communities that are ready to proceed. So what that means is, is um around middle of Feb, I just talked to the I E P A um manager, the financial assistance section today, and I asked him. And I told him he didn't have the crystal ball, but I said, is there a potential that we could get additional bypass money at the lower rate? For this project? Are we kind of locked into the seventy-three and a half? And he was actually more surprising than not. He said that. He will know more middle of February because in the middle of February, if these projects haven't advertised, they probably know for sure they haven't bypassed, which isn't too far. He'll know if we have additional funding available. And he didn't commit, he didn't commit to, you know, if we needed, if, if we needed a hundred and ten million, he didn't commit to that. But he did commit to potentially being able to provide some additional funds. He didn't give me a number, but hopefully I'll have that number and that should hopefully help this um meet that requirement. So if you can, if you think about it, if you can, if you can do a hundred and ten million at that interest rate over thirty years, your principal and interest payment is very similar to what we had in. Twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, went from four point four to four point seven, which compared to where we're at. You know, that's pretty good. But we need to be prepared in case we don't get that. And we want to plan, what's our plan if this thing bids? And um, you know, you want to do it now, not after the bids. And so we ran different scenarios, um and I think there's a financial. And Lori, and I'll, and I'll get to her. I think she's got some more details. We didn't do the financial impact. This is just some rough numbers. Scenario two is seventy-three and a half million dollars of funding through I E P A. Right, that's, let's just say that's what you can borrow. That would be three point one two five million a year. And then um they looked at a thirty-six and a half million dollar funding on a geo bond at five percent. Obviously that. Um if we can shrink that, that's gonna be good. And that's two point three. And so we ran that scenario. Scenario two, I think you ran some financial numbers on it. And I think I'm gonna turn it over to Lori to explain what these numbers mean on the rates.
Hi, sorry. Okay, so we used the, this is an example of what might happen to the rates. If the project were to bid at a, if we use a hundred percent of the hundred and ten million estimate. As well as the thirty-year I E P A loan. Um at one point six seven percent and seventy-three and a half million and another um. Thirty-six and a half million of geo bonding uh at five percent and thirty years. So that, that page with the um, the yellow and green um rates on there is what we. You, used for an estimate on the rates. So during the budget, we used the seventy-three and a half million because that's what we assumed it was gonna be and then. We um changed that based on the information that you've given us here today. So the top. Section of this is the estimated hundred and ten million for the south slope. So our twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-seven increases in the rates are the same as what you adopted during the budget. And then our twenty-eight, twenty-nine and thirty of those three years are gonna be six percent. As compared to the seventy-three and a half million during the budget session. Which we had estimated at four percent. So what that effect is on an average residential property is. The difference between um the hundred and ten and the seventy-three and a half is ninety-eight cents a month for twenty-eight. Another dollar nine for twenty-nine and a dollar fifteen for twenty-thirty. So that's eleven seventy-six in twenty-eight. Annualized thirteen oh eight in twenty-nine and thirteen eighty in twenty-thirty. And the rate, we actually tried to extrapolate way out to the end of the loan. At thirty years and um the rates can vary and we do pay off our existing E, I E P A loan. In twenty thirty-seven and we'll have some extra money to pay on principles to help us save on some interest costs in the future.
Thank you, Lori.
You're welcome.
It's a good explanation.
Yeah, very helpful. Thank you. Anything further?
Just real quick, I know, I'm sorry. Um just wanted to also say. What is our plan going forward if the project bids high? So we're also looking at deductive bid alternatives can be used to provide flexibility to reduce bid costs if needed. So if desired, um we could consider eliminating the operation building. Um we could potentially put that as a deductive alternative. So we get a price from the contractor during bidding. And it would give you an idea of what savings you could do if we were eliminate that building. Might be uh estimated at four to five million dollars. Doesn't mean that the operations building isn't necessarily a good thing um for the employees, but. You would have to reuse that existing administration building uh with that alternative that I just showed you. We would have to move the SCADA computers into that from, there's some design things we'd have to do quick, but that's something we could do. Um the other thing, so basically we're, we're trying, because of the cost increases and inflation, we're trying to. See if there's ways that when it bids, we have some ways to potentially reduce the cost. Equipment alternatives, um we made these decisions during design with the team to try to increase O and M cost as well. So screening. Not to get too engineering on you, but there's different ways to remove screens. You remember that removes the rags? A perforated plate screen is gonna remove a lot more material than slats. Perforated plate screen costs more money because this is a thirty-four foot deep screen. During design, um we met with staff and. A s, a mol, a perforated plate screen can remove eighty to ninety percent of the rags coming in where a multi rake removes forty to fifty. So there's a sacrifice there, right? It's much, it's not, it's a, quite a bit cheaper, uh maybe, maybe a half a million dollars cheaper potentially. But down the road, over a twenty-year period, you're gonna capture less stuff. The rags are gonna get into your treatment plant, could plug up pumps. But um they, the multirake could still work at your plant. You just sacrifice some things. And so some of these ideas we're talking about, we're gonna try to implement in the bid, just gives you flexibility when the bid comes. To be able to quickly determine, you know, what is affordable. That makes sense? So we're gonna try to do that as well. So I just put up some things like piping materials. We use glass line pipes for, pipes to plug in certain situations. Maybe you could um, you, you could specify different material there. Comes with potential for plugging and more maintenance. Um the electrical switchgear is a, one that we could potentially look at, um making the generator smaller. Um if you want to do that, um you know, we could make the generator, you know, the minimum, but that's not always good if you lose both. Sources of power in an activated sludge plant. And we could consider like eliminating this fermenter tank for biological phosphorus. So there's two ways to remove phosphorus. One's biological and one's chemical. So the fermenter takes that sludge, ferments it, provides a food for the bugs. So you add that and you get better B P R. Well, if you don't have the fermenter, you'll have to add more chemical. So there's a trade-off, right? You save some capital cost by eliminating the fermenter, but you're gonna spend more money in chemicals. And I think we talked about this. The only thing I'd point out with the I E P A loan is the first principal and interest payment is due. Not till around August of twenty twenty-nine because that's when substantial completion. This is gonna be a four-year-long project because we have to phase this thing. Um interest does accumulate during construction, so if you take out money, you'll get charged one point six seven percent. It's fairly insignificant with this low interest rate. So with this first principle of interest payment, you have some time. And finally, just wanted to talk quickly about the schedule. This is my last slide. We received the I E P A loan commitment. Um we're getting I E P A approval of the design. We have some things to do if we want to proceed. We have to get a loan application. We have to get the debt authorization ordinance passed. And uh we'll be working hard to get those things done. Advertise in February. Construction open bids in the March, early April. Submit the bid and bid certification to I E P A, get the I E P A loan agreement by June. Start construction in August and we're looking at four years for substantial completion um for this type of project. So I know that was a lot of information. Hopefully I explained it.
Yes. We're just sad that, you know, I think if I can, they can speak for themselves, but you know, it's just. So much more money and uh every time we do something positive to. Save our taxpayers, our residents' money, it seems like we face these situations and so tough choices to make.
Couple of questions. I, personally, I prefer the fermenter and I prefer the better uh filtering mechanism just because of long-term costs, I think. Even just importing chemicals. Supply is an issue, you know, expense can go up there too. Are we adding extra capacity through these changes? Um or is it exact, is it dead even? Cause I, I'm trying to think of the future. Obviously, we want thirty years out of this, uh at least. I would like more residents uh by the end of that thirty years that are using these facilities, because then we gotta do the north slope. And so I, I just want to make sure that we're not just, you know, the same, that we're, you know, there's added capacity for this.
So we did add capacity, but we made it more efficient. And the state to your, right now, it can go, I think we're at nine million gallons a day.
Okay.
Is that correct? And we're averaging about three million.
Okay, so we're good.
We didn't add capacity, but the capacity you have is sufficient.
It was okay, yes, so we're already running thirty-three.
That includes East Moline or parts of East Moline and Coal Valley in, in that.
Right.
And north slope, what's the ratio there, capacity with?
North slope, I think it's roughly, we're still doing about three million. It's.
North slope's five point five and then we're also at about three point five.
Okay, so we're under capacity drastically.
So the big thing with the treatment plant though is those are average numbers. And what happens at a treatment plant, most of the facilities are designed based on peak flows. And these peak flows, we do have the capacity to take more peak flow through the plant. The new, this, that's also, so the peak flow did have to be increased through the treatment plant.
Okay.
Because you have storage lagoons, but at times those can be full. Rain events, so.
And, and honestly, the south slope peak flow is I and I from. It's raining, we get the rain.
Okay.
Interesting.
Other, other questions, comments? Mr. Timmy?
One, this, we have a hundred year rain event every two or three years. Are, are these numbers based on historic hundred year or modern hundred year events?
Well, but this is also flood events, not rain.
Okay, well, we're, we're the same.
We go by FEMA and uh, and that's where we go by, um so we use the FEMA map.
I just question if, if, if we were, since we're doing this anyway, if we were to add an extra foot, would it drastically? Change the, the, the cost, the construction cost?
At this point in time, it would add cost if we add another foot.
Let's not add anymore.
Yeah, they're already adding, what was it, two to three more feet to meet the hundred year flood map.
Well, actually to exceed it.
Exceed the hundred.
For critical structures, so there's a difference, not that I wanted to get into this, but there's a difference between hydraulics through the plant and critical structures. They're two separate items.
Can, do you have the ordinance number?
The, the what?
The ordinance number? Okay, but you say it's our ordinance that's requiring.
The city ordinance required, that's what we were told. So keep in mind, not just, so the three feet. Above the hundred year flood elevation, a lot of these structures, because we elevated the site, we were able to meet that criteria for the structures. The buildings, the first floor of the building. It was more the one, the blower building, the tanks and the hydraulic city plant.
Got it. Anything further from the council? Yes, Ms. Ma.
Yes, Ms.? Has supply chain costs been factored in for the next four years? We don't know where they're going, I mean, how do you manufacture?
You know, I don't know what's going on. But it's a great question. So sometimes when a project's over four years, the contractor might even say, all right, I have a four-year project, so I'm going to bid these to the second year. So that's a great, great comment. We basically kind of factored, it's, it, it, they, that's a difficult question to answer.
The sad thing is, one hundred and ten could turn into much more, that's what I'm concerned about.
Yeah. Rule, and, and when bids come in, if we only get one bidder, it could. And then we'll have to see what we do. Again, even after a bids, you're not committed to do that project. We're here to stand by you, and if we have to apply for funding next fiscal year, I'm not saying you can get that much money next fiscal year, because that is very, I E P A won't tell me. You know, you have a chance, right? But that's not guaranteed, but that's a great question.
We're kind of, a little bit expecting a little less funding in the pot next year. One is because there's some thought that the lead service line is also going to be quite a chunk. So there's spots, they're going to need money from the wastewater pot to the lead service line pot, if everyone needs those removed. And so I think we received about twelve percent of the total amount issued. So if we go back to average, and they go back to four hundred and fifty million next year, which is about the average, and even if we get twelve percent of that, we'll see if that seventy-five comes.
Yeah, I couldn't hear.
Well, thank you very much, it's very informative and helpful.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks.
Just a comment.
Yes, Mr. Vitas?
Yeah, just, just a comment and observation and a comment, really. The number's huge, the number's big. I mean, it's thirty-four point five million dollars as it sits today, which is, which is a number that, that, you know, I get shocked even, even us internally when we saw it. But I think he's, he's explained it pretty clearly as to the reasons how it got to where it got. They're at ninety-five percent drawings at this point, so they're really close to going out the door. But before they go out the door, and before February fourth, when you finalize this ordinance with I E P A and you finalize the resolution, giving the mayor authority to sign the documents, you know, we are going to sit down and we're going to go through with a fine-tooth comb everything on those plans. And that, that is, that is a promise, that we're going through it to look for every avenue to make sure that this is not overreached, that it's spot-on. And, you know, it's been tough without Tony. I mean, Charlie, God bless him, he stepped up to the plate, you know, as he called himself the fall guy in a meeting today. I said, no, you're not the fall guy, but you know, you're going to get a new spring in your stuff, is what's going to happen. So we're going to go through and we're going to look at it. I can't promise you that those numbers are going to come down. I mean, I really can't. I would like to see them closer to the eighty million, back, back in the days of the sixty percent. But, you know, I, I think that's to be seen. And then once, you know, I think once the numbers do come in, once the bids do come in, we'll have an opportunity then to really, and hopefully it's not just one bidder, but we'll have the opportunity to sit there and really start drilling down on the numbers that they provide and looking for ways to save money every which way we can, because every penny's going to count in the end, right? Some of our ratepayers are going to pay, some of the East Moline ratepayers are going to pay, as well as Coal Valley. Keep in mind too, we're working with Colona. Colona is interested, you know, in one day connecting to our system. We have capacity, that's another ratepayer that could be added to this, you know, comparable to what we see coming out of Coal Valley. So that helps too. So, you know, everything is going to be moving target. I guess at the end of the day, it's a moving target, and we're going to win some, we're going to lose some. Right now, this is a bullet that we don't want to bite, but it's the bullet that's sitting on the table. So just wanted to share that with you, and Carol and I have already started talking about the alternatives and the impacts. So, you know, hopefully when she's feeling a little bit better, we'll, we'll go from there.
Thank you. Six point two, HUD housing reports presentations, Ms. Whitley?
All right, good evening. Let's talk about housing. As you know, Moline is a C D B G entitlement community. So as a result, we are required to submit a consolidated action plan to HUD every five years. This year, we partnered with the City of Davenport and City of Rock Island. My counterpart from Davenport, Heather Johnson, is here. And unfortunately, my counterpart from Rock Island could not be here because she's running her citizens' meeting at this time. So for the last twenty years, we have partnered, should I turn the mic off, or?
No, it's not that. Someone just needs to mute this.
Turn on a check, we're behind you.
So for the last twenty years, we have partnered, the tri-cities have partnered together, wanting to keep the cost down of these reports. But these two reports are required as we develop our consolidated action plan. The action plan, the focus of the action plan is to focus on the community needs as well as housing. And how we developed it, we need resources. These two reports are two of those resources. So the housing needs assessment is basically the demand and supply of housing in our communities. While the analysis of impediments to fair housing choice, that consultant analyzed the barriers for the protected classes when it comes to housing and housing choices. So kind of keep things short here. I had, is Brian, um, can we bring Brian up? Brian's.
Hi, KJ, this is Jesse Johnson, I'm here. Brian had to go set up for a five o'clock town hall that we're doing today, so I'm going to be able to lead and conduct the presentation for everybody.
Okay, thank you, Jesse. So Brian Points from Points Consulting and Jesse Johnson from Points Consulting did the housing needs assessment. And then with me, Jeremy, if you want to come up. Jeremy Gray from Mosaic, who also did our report five years ago, he did the analysis of impediments. But we're going to start off with the housing needs assessment, and I think we're going to hold questions to the end of the first presentation, and then as well as the second presentation, if you guys don't mind. And go ahead, Jesse.
Okay, there's my audio. Perfect. Hello, everybody. Let's see, oh, there we go. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Hello, everyone, it's great meeting with you today. KJ, nice to see you again, virtually speaking, of course. I'm going to share my screen real quick.
We've got your presentation up already.
Jesse, we have the slides here.
Okay, yeah, so I guess what I'll do is, I'll just kind of, you know, go through it on my end, and then just, if I say next slide, if someone could just transition to it, that would be very helpful, thank you.
We're currently on the some of our experience slide, just so you know.
Perfect, I appreciate you sharing that with me. Yes, as you can tell from this slide, we have done a variety of different housing needs assessment studies from various different parts of the country, such as Kentucky, Utah, Pennsylvania, and Broken Arrow. And on slide three, it asks the question, you know, what is this housing assessment? Essentially, it's a research project that, you know, considers the balance of housing, supply and demand. And to go through this, we look at different variables such as population demographics, building trends, the regional economy, community feedback, and of course, land use conventions and zoning code. And then on slide four, you're, you know, the question asks, why do a housing assessment? Well, everybody has a role to play in housing, whether you're a council member, a citizen, a nonprofit, a builder, developer. The market research is an important, necessary first step to give you a guiding point on how to take action, to do something. Now, we're going to look into, before we get into the actual housing forecast, we're going to look into the population forecast on slide five. As you can see, then we gave two different forecasts to, just to give you a variety of what you could see. The status quo, this kind of follows more the idea of there is no economic change. And if that is the case, Moline's overall population is declining, is expected to continue this decline. However, with the optimistic approach, this is assuming a more positive outlook on economic development. This is expected to have up to a population increase of up to twenty percent by twenty forty-four. And now we're going to go into the housing needs forecast. You know, same as before, status quo and optimistic. The, this is just based off of the population that we just showed. It's important to see what your population is expecting in the future in order to look at your housing needs. With the status quo, you know, again, the population is declining, so you'll, you're needing less than eleven hundred units. But with the optimistic, demand for housing could well go up to forty-four hundred units. One thing I'd like to share before we move on is pass the fly is really connected to demand in the future. It shows you what kind of construction capacity you have, such as workforce and other dynamics that the region has. And of course, with permits, this could come months or even a year before the certificate of occupancy is issued. So there is a lag between the two. But on slide seven, when we look at the housing permits in Moline, this graph focuses on the single family. Now, we, there is data for the multifamily, however, it was aggregated with other types of commercial developments. So we chose to focus on the single family permits for Moline. As you can see, within the last nineteen years, it's fluctuated a little bit with the peak in two thousand and four. There are so a few peaks in two thousand and ten and two thousand and nineteen, but since two thousand and twenty, there has not been any observational spikes. And as part of our research, we did a community survey to get the community input of what they would like to see and what their concerns are. Now, given our time constraint, we're just going to focus on one specific question. However, in our two-hundred-page report, there is a vast, more information of our work, including the community survey responses. But we're going to focus on the question, would you like to see additional housing added to the Q C? So for this question, we got seven hundred and four responses, and two hundred and twelve of the responses came from Moline. As you can see, fourteen percent of the respondents said that they did not want to see housing stock increase at this time. However, as you can see by the blue forty-one percent, the respondent says, yes, they do, they would like to see additional housing. However, they would like a mix of both single family and more dense housing options. This is actually quite encouraging, because in a lot of the research we've done in the past, there's been actually a significantly higher amount of no's from different ones. In Oklahoma, it was almost a forty percent no's, and then in Colorado, it was also a similar number. So it's encouraging to see that your community members do want to see more housing, just, you know, a little bit of everything, single family and more dense options. And then we're going to, going to just transition to, into the households that can afford to buy an average-priced home. And I'm going to get into the more details of this information, but I would like to just share the slide first. So as you can see, for Moline, roughly six percent of individuals who are in the twenty-five to just under thirty-five thousand income bracket can afford to buy an average-priced home. And as you can see, roughly fourteen percent of individuals in the seventy-five to just under a hundred thousand can buy the average-priced home. And then the twenty-three percent show that individuals are, that are below the necessary income requirements. Well, you're probably wondering, well, that, that seems kind of surprising that someone with lower income bracket could buy an average-priced home. Well, there's a couple of reasons for that. One is the limitations of data. You know, a lot of this comes from Realtor M L S data, and so when they're going through approvals for mortgages to say, oh, okay, this person at this income was able to acquire this, so they were able to buy it, so that's part of it. And now there is also the other part of it, which is known as filtering. And that's a very common thing in the real estate market. So I'm going to explain that really quickly. So filtering is where, let's say you have a family who is in a home that's worth right now a hundred thousand dollars, and then right now, in the tri-cities area, it takes approximately two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars to build a new home. So let's say that gets built, that allows that individual who is in that home, a hundred thousand dollar home already, to step up to a new home and transition to that two hundred twenty-two thousand house, and then they put their hundred thousand dollar home on the market, which allows someone at a lower income bracket to acquire that home. That's just known as filtering, and so that kind of gives more information of how this could be with the lower income brackets able to buy average-priced homes. And since we're talking about income, we're going to go into a little further detail into it on slide ten. Okay. The price income change over time. Oh, I'm sorry, did someone have a question?
No, we're good, right now.
Okay, thank you. Yes, so as you can see, for the City of Moline, in the past twelve years, median income has increased by sixteen percent, which is nice to see. However, the median rent and home values have increased substantially higher. However, as you can see with the United States, the people of Moline are significantly better off than the United States as a whole, where rent and home values have increased even more substantial than in Moline. But perhaps, perhaps looking in vacancy could help maybe address that issue. So in slide ten, we're looking into that right now. So this is actually a really cool information we were able to gather. This was working with a partnership with the HUD and United States Postal Service. So if you, if the city is a HUD-certified city, which Moline is, they can work with the United States Postal Service to acquire data of what properties are vacant. And then we were able to get that data and put together this really good map that shows you where the higher concentrations of vacancies are located. So between the three cities, you have the highest, or excuse me, the lowest vacancy rate of a three percent. And most of the vacancy lies in the downtown area of Moline. And like the other tri-cities, they are more concentrated along the, the river. Other tri-cities, though, the vacancies are vacant the longest of the three, which is in Moline. And as you can see by the donut figure, most of the vacancies have been over six months. And then we're going to move into the recommendations. And so as you can see, some of these are only applicable to Moline, not all of them are. However, since this was a joint partnership between Davenport, Iowa, Rock Island, and Moline, Illinois, we wanted to, you know, put them all together to share with you. Okay, so we're going to start with the community revitalization. Before we get into the recommend, you know, actual recommendations about revitalization, I'd like to share some of the, the progress that the City of Moline has, has done so far. So from our research and some of the information KJ provided, the City of Moline began preparing a vacant property list in two thousand and twenty using staff members due to the passage of the vacant default mortgage property registration ordinance. Since then, four hundred and sixty-three vacant properties have been identified, and three hundred and nineteen are no longer vacant due to demolitions, properties being sold and rehab, and they continue to maintain this list to the HARA property registration. And as of October twenty twenty-four, there are only a hundred and twenty-six unregistered properties that are listed as vacant. And some of the other things that they've done very well. Moline is the recipient of the Illinois Development Housing Authority's C P two grant, and they've used that funding for acquisition, demolition, and rehabilitation of properties for sale to underserved home buyers. And they've also been a recipient of the H R I P rehabilitation program, which provides low-income individuals with a funding to, with rehabilitation, repairs of their properties, which makes that very useful. And they've also been awarded one point five million dollars from the H A S H R grant, which provides up to sixty thousand dollars for home buyers for rehabilitation. So that, that's great to see that they're making progress on that. So that, that's great to see that they're making progress on that so far. So with your land bank, it's actually, you know, with it really well done with acquiring properties and then getting to the point where they can be, you know, eventually used by someone else. The one thing that could help with accelerating the land bank is to use your certified judgment. From what we understood, from looking into it, speaking with Mary, it sounds like Rock Island is almost done with completing the process for certified judgment. And then Moline is finished, so our recommendation is just encouraging the use of the certified judgment, which allows vacant properties to be transitioned from the city to the land bank. And then we're going to move on to the Step Up Housing Program. So essentially what that is, a nonprofit works with a, a person in the city to basically revitalize vacant or properties that need repairs. A good example of this would be Step Up Bisbee, located in Bisbee, Arizona. Essentially what they do is they have a program where they work with a person, corporation, LLC, that LLC acquires a property. And then the nonprofit works on repairing the home so that way it's ready to be lived in again. Then the LLC or corporation person, they donate that property to the city. And the benefit to them is they are able to get a 30% tax deduction on their adjusted gross income. And depending on the bracket, that could amount to as much as $50,000. And then the nonprofit and the city, they sell that property to a community employee that's in this essentials, such as law enforcement, a city worker, that sort of thing. And they sell to them under 20% of the appraised value, so it's less of a cost to them, which allows them to get into the home at a more affordable price. And then the proceeds go back into the nonprofit. So that, that way they can, they continue to do this over and over again. And the next thing we're going to get into is the community land trust. So essentially what that is, is a nonprofit basically acquires land. And then they lease the land into someone who has a home on the property. This helps lower the cost because neither party owns both the land and the house. And as you can see, when looking at things such as Zillow, you'll see like a property that's like, okay, house, you know, land, you know, $500,000. And then you'll see just an open parcel of land that's worth only 100 grand. Well, you know, that's because there's no infrastructure, there's no house on it. So that's one of the reasons why it's cheaper. So by dividing ownership of the house and the actual land itself, it lowers the value of the home, which makes it less costly to the person living in the house. And then we get into the, tapping into the, the Illinois Housing Development Authority's mortgage programs. So there are three different programs right now. There is the forgivable, the deferred, and the repayable. Essentially, these are, you know, opportunities. Sometimes they're loans or money you don't have to pay back, depending on the circumstances, or not circumstances, if you meet the requirement. So they help with the, the assistance for, excuse me, they help with the closing costs of buying the home. So that way it just lowers the cost a bit. And then depending on which program you use, some you don't have to pay back at all if you live in the house long enough. Or it's not, you know, you don't have to pay it back until either the mortgage is paid off or you sell the home essentially. And more information can be found about that on the Illinois Housing Development Authority's website. And then the last one I definitely want to get into is the encouraging more high-density, low-maintenance units in urban cores. So from our research, roughly 12% of individuals are one-person households. So it is encouraged to focus on, you know, units like, you know, single-family condos. Because it's actually one of the things that's more attractable to developers because, one, you can put more units on the same chunk of land. So essentially, they're getting more bang for their buck. And then also too is these smaller units are much easier to maintain, you know. So the repair costs go down, so a lot of times if those go down, renter costs go down as well. Yeah, so essentially, if you, depending on certain districts, there, where you do allow high density, you can't put more in there. So for Moline, the urban business districts B2 and B3 are suited for mixed-use developments. The R5 zoning code could support higher-density multifamily housing if restrictions on the minimum unit sizes were reduced. But by making these zoning changes, you're able to have this situation. And then one of the other things, benefits about this as well is, you know, it could actually kind of give revitalization for, you know, a lot of commercial areas. When we spoke with the developer, he said, you know, we got to bring, bring people back downtown in order to generate revenue. And for these types of units, a lot of the people who took our survey said the best place for them would be just behind or on a commercial areas would be the best place for them. And one thing I'd like to point out with these recommendations is that, you know, we're just pointing out gaps. We're not, you know, forcing anyone to say, this is how you do it, this is the only way. We're just, again, pointing out gaps and that we recognize that the city is not, is not always the best entity to lead this recommendation or to do it on their own. Are there any questions?
I, I think I have one. Actually, this is Mayor Ryan Putty. You have just reiterated things I just heard two, three days ago at the U.S. Conference of Mayors, whose main theme for this year is housing. I believe the president said it's not an issue, it's the issue. And everything you said about more likely having like single-person families or a few, you know, smaller, smaller numbers of people that don't require larger houses is actually a majority of people. I distinctly recall hearing that in the presentation. The filtering point you mentioned was also brought up by some federal folks. But I was curious, you know, just the simple law of supply and demand, right? You can talk about your, our projected housing needs, but that doesn't really take into account how we would impact decreasing rent rates. Or, or have you looked at that in terms of if we bring more housing units online, how that will decrease potentially rates, rental rates, right? Because, because there's more out there and they can't charge as much. Is there anything related to that, the rent burden issue in our city that's in your numbers?
Yeah, thank you for your question. And before I get to that, if you don't mind me asking, what was the name of that conference?
The U.S. Conference of Mayors.
Thank you.
Organization, yeah.
Okay, let me just see if I can summarize what you, what you're asking. So I think your question is, does our report have information about how increasing supply, like how much it would lower rent?
Yeah, yeah. What kind of impact do, does the number of units you're redcommending have on reducing rents? I don't know.
Yes.
I don't know if you were able to answer that at all, but I'm curious.
Okay, well, yeah, so I think when, if, I think we can't really specify, okay, if you create, you know, 425 more units, it will lower rent by X amount of dollars per unit. But it is kind of a law of, you know, supply and demand where if your supply increases, you know, you know, prices do go down because, you know, in a way, there's, there's more options. There's, you know, there's more competition essentially, because that's kind of what we're dealing with right now, where there's a lot of, you know, people who just can't find housing. So of course, that raises the rents up as well. But I think, you know, having more units available could really help with that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Timian and then Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you. Jesse, obviously, we don't have the full report, we have slides. I'm looking at the recommendation and I understand that there is the appetite for more high-density units. And, you know, according to the slide, you look at the zoning codes and everything. Why were there no recommendations for zoning code reform? Our multifamily unit prospects for where we can build them is very limited in the city. We have a majority single-family residential zoning map with a few spots of B3 or R4, R6. Why was that not a recommendation? And this kind of dovetails into the recommendation four, which is to, you're saying to put them in urban cores, why not put high-density units in residential neighborhoods? Why is that not a suggestion on, on your presentation?
Okay, thank you. Yes, so our 200-page report has substantial more information. But from the report, we do make recommendations on for business districts B2, B3, and of course, R5. And then we also have more information about the zoning codes for each city within the report.
Okay.
Okay.
So there's more in the report, so we'll have access to that at some point. Mr. Schmidt.
When, when you're talking about the ability of someone to afford housing in the area, that in no way would reflect, reflect their ability to actually get the housing. So we, we have a significant issue where we have people who maybe can afford to buy a house, but every time a house comes on the market at that rate, it sells with multiple offers over asking price. It doesn't seem to provide prices significantly higher, but what you're reporting as far as affordability doesn't really take into account availability of housing stock, does it? Didn't seem to, based on the analysis.
Are you referring to the, kind of the slide where it says households that can afford to buy an average price home? Is that kind of the slide you were asking about?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Well, yes, so as, as you remember, I talked about the filtering. But then I also talked about where this is kind of a limitation of data, where, you know, as we collect the data, you know, person who will look at the mortgage at different incomes, like, okay, this person was able to get this mortgage at this income. So, yes, you do bring up a good point where the data doesn't speak for every single, you know, scenario or, you know, situation. That is a limitation of the data, but it does just kind of provide a little bit, does provide information as well.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Castro.
Most of that information was about being able to purchase the homes. Is there something in the full report that talks about, you know, people being able to afford an actual rent?
Yes, we do get into rent trends and other similar information within the 200-page report.
Mr. Timian.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I'm curious, we talk about average building costs for a single family, which is prohibitive and more expensive than buying an older home. Obviously, supply is an issue. Do you have any recommendations on duplex conversion? Which is much more affordable and can create this missing middle housing option for these single people who don't need a full house anymore? Is there anything in the report on that?
Okay, just to be sure, I heard your question correctly, because you, you did cut out a little bit. I think your question is, does our report talk about duplex conversions?
Correct, correct. As an alternative, it's, it's a more cost-effective measure than building new homes. You have existing neighborhoods, existing buildings, just as an attainable affordability, all sorts of different factors.
Yes, thank you for your question. I believe our community survey does talk about duplex conversions. I know the main four we have spoken about today is our main recommendations. But once again, we are not saying this is the only way or you have to do it this way. No, 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 we're not saying that, oh, we're just, you know, pointing out gaps. And we also recognize that, you know, sometimes there are other ways to reach the goals as well.
Yes, Ms. Murphy.
Does your study address the rising population of homelessness in the quart cities and have any idea what we could do to move those people out of that state to a new, to into a home or something? Does it address that at all?
I believe we give some information about homeless individuals as well. However, do we give like a specific recommendation for what to do with the homeless population specifically? No.
Ms. Murphy, the team has been working on the comprehensive housing plan we asked for in our last strategic plan. And I just looked at a draft, they do have recommendations on that, so we'll be talking more about that for sure. If there's nothing further from the council, I just want to add as a compliment to your report that you've shared with us today, back to this U.S. Conference of Mayors presentation, a slide that I took a picture of, which I can make available to staff and council. But it's titled Cities, and it's the same experts on the federal level, Cities and Towns Adopting Reforms to Allow More Housing Types, These Are the Things We Should Do. Number one, enable accessory dwelling units, done here in Moline. Number two, legalizing two to four units on most lots, that's what you're talking about. We're talking about missing middle housing. Number three, legalizing multifamily in commercial areas, that's the rezoning that we're talking about. Four, streamlining permit approval processes, we've been working on that with one-stop-shop type stuff, right? Allowing use of manufactured housing, limiting parking mandates. We've not talked about it as, for residential as much, but as commercial. And finally, legalizing micro-units slash co-living and, and house sharing. Just thought I'd put that out there because it was complimentary to this discussion. Thank you so much, Mr. Johnson. We'll have to move to our next presentation. Yes, Ms. Whitley?
Thank you, Jesse. And Jesse, again, is with Points Consulting out of Idaho. Now, I'd like to introduce Jeremy Gray, Community Planning, out of Atlanta, Georgia.
Great, thank you. That font came out weird on my slides, so hopefully it'll all still fit on there. My name is Jeremy Gray, Mosaic Community Planning. So the second, kind of the companion to the housing needs assessment that Points worked on, we worked with that team and with our own staff on this analysis of impediments to fair housing choice. Again, the three cities that received the HUD funding cooperated together on this, rather than each have to do their own, which is great. And you should pat yourselves on the back for that staff-level cooperation that's happening, it's saving you money. One of the strings that is attached to those community development block grant funds that the city of Moline receives from HUD every year, and there's a few of them. But one of them is the city signs a certification that gets sent off to the federal government that says that you will affirmatively further fair housing. And here's the regulatory definition of what that means. So the city is certifying to the government that as a condition of receiving the money, you will not only work against housing discrimination in its overt forms, but you will work to build inclusive communities, you'll work to overcome barriers that people might face to housing and patterns of segregation, you'll work to overcome those as well. Our report is kind of the first step in that process, is looking at what exists now and sets recommendations that you can pursue to work in that direction. These four bullets in the middle of this slide are really the, the core of our report. So we're looking at patterns of integration and segregation by race, ethnicity, national origin. We're looking at areas of poverty within the city, particularly where those areas of poverty overlap with communities of racial or ethnic minorities. We're looking at access to opportunity, so looking at factors like school proficiency or proximity to jobs and work centers, availability of transportation. How do those all overlap? And are there areas within the city that have, you know, multiple of these resources that are missing or absent? And we're looking at housing needs. Primarily there, we're talking about cost burden, which means households spending more than 30% of their incomes on their housing costs. So an affordability concern, that also does include substandard housing and overcrowding as well. And then after reviewing those, we identify impediments and propose some recommendations to address them. Briefly, I'll move quickly through this. You can see here our timeline, we're here at the tail end of it, presenting our draft report to you. We did quite a bit of community engagement that goes with this work. And so there's a lot of data from the census and other places that we work with. But we also do need to hear people's experiences of housing in Moline. Points took the lead on the housing survey, Jesse already told. Jesse already talked about that, but there were 706 responses to that survey, which is really good. We held a few different community meetings. Those were virtual, those were in-person. We tried to have a variety of different ways that people could meet about the study. Our team popped up and tabled at several community events. In Moline, it was at Mercado on Fifth back in August. We did a veterans' job fair at a mall in Davenport. We were at Rock Island Soul of the City Festival, lots of different things like that, interacted with 100 or so people at our table in those settings. Interviewed stakeholders, people who have a professional interest in housing, maybe nonprofit leaders, maybe local government officials, developers, lenders, things of that nature, and resident focus groups. So just understanding that there are populations likely to be impacted by fair housing issues and also maybe not likely to turn out to a meeting and talk about it. So trying to identify what some of those groups are and intentionally get in front of some of those people so we could hear their insights as well. So we did focus groups with seniors, people with disabilities, immigrants and refugees, and also one with the Quad Cities housing cluster. So I picked out four pieces of our data, four maps or charts that I wanted to share with you, just to give you examples. Like Jesse was saying about their report, ours also is lengthy, there's a lot of data in it, but I wanted to give you an idea of what you would find within the full report. So this is a map showing the racial and ethnic composition of the three cities that we're working with. You can look at the colors of the dots and you can tell where there are some concentrations or some clustering happening. Moline, the blue dots that you see kind of interspersed there primarily in the northwest portion of the city is the Hispanic and Latino population. You see a larger concentration of green dots, which is the black population toward the northeast corner of the city. Orange is the white population, and that's pretty well evenly distributed throughout. You do see some denser areas of the city appear on a map of that type, though. So we would contrast a map like that with a map like this of poverty, for example. And Moline is interesting in the couple of different maps that I'll show you that we picked out. You can see the yellow color, which is the poverty rate's over 50%. There's a tract in Davenport and one in Rock Island that meet that criteria, not in Moline and not that brighter shade of green either. I think Moline had less of the extremes, I think, when we looked at a lot of these different factors. It was more of the middle features, but you do have that area of somewhere, you know, around 30 or 40% poverty rate, again, that northeast corner of the city. And this is one of several different opportunity factors that we mapped. And this one is school proficiency. It's based, we mapped HUD's data. It's based on standardized test scores at the fourth-grade level to derive the data from. We don't generate this data, we just analyze it. You see here, I think, again, another case, Moline inhabiting the, maybe the middle tier with less of the extremes that you see in some of the other cities. However, we do have that one kind of area to the northwest of lower school proficiency And then this table here, Moline, you're the middle columns in this data. This is looking at housing problems. And so I mentioned before, housing problems includes affordability, it includes overcrowding, and it includes substandard conditions. And so this is the percentage of people by race and ethnicity that encounter one of those, one or more of those housing problems. In Moline, about a quarter of the white population faces one of those housing problems. You can see there are some disparities in that data. If you compare that with the black population, it's 40%. Compare that with the Hispanic population, it's 34%. So there are some significant gaps there. Here again, though, some of those gaps are shallower than they are in some of your peer cities in Davenport and Rock Island. So moving on, then, just in the interest of time, I'm going to hit on four different impediments that our study identified. Our slides have a few different of our recommendations. I'm just going to highlight one to go with each of the impediments. The report has more even better on these slides, but this is just to give you an idea of what we found and something that we proposed that a city could do about it. And the first of those impediments is an insufficient access to affordable housing. I don't think surprising to any of you. However, there are, there are layers to this, there's nuance to this, but affordability of housing was the most frequently cited thing when we were interacting with people, members of the public about this report. But particularly units for large families, or particularly, or we just had a conversation about units for small families, but the affordability aspect, when you have a large family that needs three or four bedrooms, it can be unattainable in terms of cost. Also accessible housing for people with disabilities, the cost of that can be unaffordable. Households of color are more likely to have housing problems, which was the data that we just looked at, and so some of those affordability issues are disproportionate in their impacts on people by race and ethnicity. The city already receives CDBG funds from HUD every year. That's a great place to start. The city is already using its funds for this to increase housing supply. We just emphasize here, housing of any type, we say rental and for homeownership, we say rehab and new construction, any new housing that you're adding to the supply in Moline is going to help with alleviating the affordability problem. And that relates back to a question that you were asking the other consultant. Impediment number two, a lack of targeted investment in underserved areas results in increasing disparities in access to opportunity, which is a mouthful, but basically, when we looked at that school proficiency map, we have a series of maps mapping other factors similar to that. And so where deficiencies in access to opportunity start to pile up in one neighborhood or one location, that becomes concerning if you live in a neighborhood that not only has low school proficiency, but also doesn't have transit access, doesn't have good access to jobs, the environmental quality is poor. So we look for those types of things. They exist in Moline and the other cities as well, I think indicating a need for place-based revitalization and investment. The recommendation I'll highlight here is that middle one, again, relating to CDBG funding because it's a source, a resource that you have. Already, there are nonprofits that can apply to the city on a competitive basis to receive that CDBG funding. To the extent that access to the labor market, workforce development is a need, and some of those communities identifying and bringing to the table organizations that will apply for funding for that purpose. The city doesn't control that, it can only fund the organizations that apply, but maybe fostering some of the relationships so that you're getting applications from organizations that can help meet that need could be a step in the right direction. Number three, insufficient and unequally distributed public housing or publicly-supported housing options. We looked at public housing units, but also housing that is subsidized through other programs, 202, 811, low-income housing tax credits, the Housing Choice Voucher Program as well. And so we mapped kind of the locations of where people are using vouchers in Moline. Fairly, relatively even, I think, distribution. However, across the center of the city, laterally, so between east and west, maybe roughly between 23rd and 38th Avenues, vouchers are more scarce in that kind of parallel of the city. Along the river, there are more, to the southern portion of the city, there are more. One of our recommendations here is working with the housing authority on programs to incentivize or encourage participation of landlords in the voucher program, maybe also to help tenants understand how to better use their vouchers. The whole, the beauty of the voucher program is tenants can take these vouchers and use them in any neighborhood of their choice, and yet they still do end up clustered. And so, you know, what are some of the barriers to access housing in that middle portion of the city? And is there something that the housing authority can do education-wise or otherwise to help those tenants? And finally, fair housing education and equitable enforcement of fair housing within Moline. Moline's Human Rights Commission, I think, is a keystone here. You already have kind of some muscle around fair housing. You have an organization that's dedicated to that as its mission. But these fair housing organizations are burdened. There's a lot of complaints that come in, there's more often than they can investigate, and so finding ways to help those organizations and support their work is going to be key here. And the recommendation I'll highlight here is the last one on the slide, understanding that there are communities within Moline of people who maybe have language barriers, cultural barriers, there might be limited English proficient communities where understanding the terms of a lease and understanding what you're doing when you're signing it aren't necessarily clear. Those communities are vulnerable and ripe for exploitation by landlords, and so making sure that not only is there a pamphlet out there about what fair housing is, but it is directed in an intentional way to communities that are likely to have members that might face those sorts of issues. And so being strategic about that. And so that's the fourth, and just a kind of a quick run-through, a touch on some of the things that we had, but I will be happy to answer questions if you have one.
That was really helpful. I, again, council can speak for themselves, but having had comprehensive housing as one of our top two goals, you know, trying to work on this issue and just to finally have information like this to help us understand it better and to help provide direction is really helpful. So thank you, KJ, and all your consultants, and the rest of the team in CED.
So our next step forward, we're going to ask the consultants to go back and finalize the reports. We hope to have the reports in about 30 days with the AI analysis of impediments. We're going to put it out for a 30-day commentary for all of these cities. As far as the Housing Needs Assessment, that won't block for a commentary period. The data is what the data is. What we want us to finalize is that. And then those reports will be placed on our websites. From there, then each city will start to develop their consolidated plan. Technically, with Moline, our plan is due on November 15th of last year. Reason that we have not submitted that yet is because until Congress passes the Transportation Bill, HUD won't know what their allocations are for another 60 days after that is passed. So they do not want entitlements to submit their consolidated plan. So then again, this is going to back us up in receiving our dollars. Hopefully, they can have that done in 30 days. So say they pass that Transportation Bill within 30 days, then HUD has 60 days to run their formulas. They give us the formulas after that 60 days, and we have 60 days to develop our plan. Then we submit it to HUD, and they have 45 days to review that plan. So it could be, you know, June, July, when we actually see dollars. But in the meantime, staff is developing that plan, as well as developing this one. And so we will utilize these reports along with communication with our neighborhoods, our tenants, our residents. Right now, with CDBG, we provide rental systems out of it. We provide demolition services out of it, rehab services out of it. You know, we have a homebuyer program that I'm taking through our CATCUP board, where I want to make some different variations in it, where we're going to bring rehab into it and up the cost. Right now, we're giving $7,100 to buy a house. I want to recommend $10,000 to buy a house. And for those people, half will get the $10,000, and the other half will get the $10,000 plus probably $20,000 in rehab, which is not a lot of money, because if you see what our rehab bids are coming in at, they're very expensive right now. But just trying to implement a little bit more when it comes to housing and get them set up for maintaining that house for five, 10 years once they get in there. So you're going to see us try to introduce some other programs into the CATCUP board, which will look at that policy book, and then it'll come to council for your input and go up to HUD for their final approval. So we're probably looking at bringing this back in March to you guys. Tonight was just a presentation, we're not asking for any council action tonight. So thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Chief, is there any public comment? Okay, so we moved two questions on the agenda, one clarifying item, number 17.1, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a contract with Collins Concrete Litterated for project number 1482, excuse me, 2025 Alley Reconstruction for the amount of $316,758.11 is listed under Consent Agenda Resolutions, but it should appear on the non-consent agenda resolutions. So we will move it over there and the clerk will read the numbers properly. All right, so we have our committee of the whole agenda items now. 9.1, a resolution granting an overhead electric easement to Mid-American Energy Company, MEC, at lot numbers eight and 15 in block number one, all in that part of Moline Township known as and called CG Toolins. Second addition to East Moline, as said lots are known and designated upon the recorded plat of said addition situated in the city of Moline, County of Rock Island, in the state of Illinois, PIN 0835140010, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and acknowledge said easement. Mr. Vitas.
Yes, this is a pretty much straightforward request from Mid-American to establish the overhead electric easement, which is located actually along Second Avenue, which is long abandoned, frankly, on that end of the east end of town and is actually located inside the tip. One of the things that we did explore just earlier was taking a look at the option for undergrounding as opposed to an overhead easement and creating more overhead lines. But in this case, it's more appropriate that it just be overhead. So we are looking at all options all the time for undergrounding where possible, but we're going to recommend approval.
Motion to approve. Second. Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. 9.2, a resolution approving change order number one and final with General Constructors, Inc., for project number 1465, Midtown Parking Ramp Expansion Joint Repairs for the amount of $15,638.79. Mr. Vitas.
Pretty straightforward. This is for repairs that were finalized on the midtown ramp back in 2024, and these funds, of course, would be applied against those costs that were incurred at that time through the audit. And we're recommending approval of both 9.2 and 9.3 coming up next, both for the same project area.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Macias. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. 9.3, a resolution approving change order number one and final with General Constructors, Inc., for project number 1467, Midtown Parking Ramp Access Controls for the amount of $23,719.57.
Staff's recommending approval.
Thank you. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Macias. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. 9.4, an ordinance amending Chapter 22 offenses miscellaneous of the Moline Code of Ordinances by increasing the number of tobacco licenses in the city at the request of Ha Smoke Shop, Inc., DBA, Moline Liquor, Tobacco, and Vape. Ms. Kostopoulos.
Yes, thank you. So these next three are applications for new tobacco licenses in existing businesses. So buyers who are coming in and seeking to continue to sell tobacco. We believe that all three of these will be Class B licenses, but these applications came in prior to the ordinance, proposed ordinance to amend the current tobacco ordinance to create the three classes. So they applied correctly for the time of their application and should be analyzed and considered under the current ordinance, which does not yet, but maybe after tonight, include the separation into three license classes. So all of these, as I said, are applicants who are seeking to continue to sell tobacco. to sell tobacco in existing businesses. We anticipate if you approve the overall amendment to the tobacco ordinance, that they ultimately, if they are approved, would receive Class B licenses, which would not be affected by the proposed moratorium on Class As, but would require, in any circumstance, your approval to increase the cap on licenses. Because remember, that cap floats, and you cannot sell a tobacco license similar to a liquor license when you sell your business. So they are new applicants.
Thank you for that review.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Schmidt, seconded by Castro. Discussion. Mr. Schmidt.
I appreciate us walking through that, looking at the technicalities. I think we're at a, it's at a time where we may have to amend these further down the road, but not in a way that is meant to discourage them. Because I think, I know I have been, and the council has been supportive of, when a business is selling, we want to allow that business to sell to continue operating. We're not looking to interfere. It just gets a little more complicated because we're updating that ordinance right now. And appreciate as we continue to be walked through, if that has to be modified before it makes final passage. But I'm very much supportive of allowing these businesses to sell and continue to operate.
Ms. Kostopoulos.
I would add to go along with your remarks that should you approve tonight, these three or any one of these three, to go forward, that perhaps when they are on your council agenda next time, you might add, and if you give final approval to the overall tobacco ordinance amendments, that you may want to amend by motion next meeting, these or any one of these three ordinances to include that they would receive a Class B license.
We do that at a future.
Yeah.
Yeah. Understood. Thank you. If there's nothing further, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Nine point five, an ordinance amending Chapter twenty-two offenses miscellaneous of the Moline Code of Ordinances by increasing the number of tobacco licenses in the city at the request of Grace Store LLC, DBA Vantage Point.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Schmidt, seconded by Timian. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Nine point six, an ordinance amending Chapter twenty-two offenses miscellaneous of the Moline Code of Ordinances by increasing the number of tobacco licenses in the city at the request of JS Liquor and Food, Inc., DBA Five Star Liquor and Food.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Schmidt, seconded by Castro. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the loan application forms and supporting documents to borrow funds from the Water Pollution Control Loan Program to finance improvements to the South Slope Wastewater Treatment Plant and authorizing the Director of Utilities and Director of Finance for the sole purpose of authorizing or executing any documents associated with payment requests or reimbursements from the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency in connection with this loan.
This is an agreement, a standard paperwork that has to be completed in order for us to stay on track to potentially take out a loan in the future if the city council decides. All this does is say the mayor will be the one signing the paperwork, standard requirement by the IAPA.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Razak. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Nine point eight, a resolution authorizing the mayor, city clerk, and city staff to apply to the U.S. Department of Transportation for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five rebuilding America Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity Discretionary Grant Application for the I-74 Riverfront Reimagine Project and authorizing the mayor, city clerk, and staff to do all things necessary to prepare and submit said grant application. Hello.
Hello, everyone. Just furthering from the presentation done a couple weeks ago on the RACE grant, just looking to get your full approval on submitting that. We have put ten percent as a match to the total. So I think we're around six hundred fifty thousand, which is already budgeted funding and capital improvement budget. So, yeah, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer anything.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Schmidt, seconded by Finch. Discussion. I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. I'm glad we're getting in here right before the door potentially closes. This was brought up, in fact, Secretary Buttigieg was at one of the meetings just that I've had discussing this. And it's a very over-subscribed program, and a lot of people have gotten turned away. So it's a testament to East Moline and Rock Island that they have received them. So we will hope for the best. We know you do great work.
It's been very, it is a very competitive grant. It's been amazing working with the entire team at Moline. Everybody is contributing, CED, legal, executive. Who am I missing? All the departments are helping, and it's been a great team effort. So it's not just me, but, you know, all of us working together to get this one in, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
There's nothing further, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. And again, you will see that as it says here, you will see it under items not on consent due to the deadline. Informational, Mr. Vitas, the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-six Strategic Plan Dashboard for fiscal year twenty-four, quarter four.
Well, thank you, mayor, and council, and staff, and thank you, community. I really support all the projects that we're doing. We ended fiscal twenty-four on a really great note. We are basically thirty-two percent complete on the forty-seven projects in that goal. I mean, in terms of the overall strategic plan. We've got fifty-seven percent, maybe fifty-seven and a half percent, that is actually, you know, on track and making progress, heading toward completion, you know, with specific completion dates. So that's really, really great. And we're only really, only behind on six point four percent, which is, you know, de minimis in relationship to the volume of work that's going on. So there's been a lot of things that have been done. A lot of them you've seen before, and you're gonna see again because we keep updating the report. One project, and I'll just say one project that's on hold is the zoning, which I know is near and dear to many of you. And it's, and it's near and dear to me because it really does address what we can and can't do throughout the city in terms of people's rights, property rights, and residential, especially in residential neighborhoods. So that can't start until we're done. And I know there's been some email traffic, but that can't really start until we get this con plan underway, and that RFP is getting wrapped up.
Yeah, and I would say, you know, just keep in mind, you're doing a lot of the zoning when you're doing the con plan too. So you're starting to do some of that.
Yeah.
Through that process.
Yeah, so the team is moving forward. We're moving forward with MKSK, getting them back on the track, getting them back on board and wrapping up when they, when we put the hold on them, they're at sixty percent. It won't take much to get them to a hundred. So we're hoping to have them done like first part of the spring and out the door, and at the same time be launching then into our comprehensive plan. And it's gonna be an interesting process, I will say that. It's going to, a lot has changed since twenty twenty, when that plan was worked out years, you know, decades ago. And we find ourselves in a similar place, but we find ourselves with some dissimilar things going on today that weren't there. So, you know, looking, looking forward to that. But overall, I think, and I know the hour's late, it's been a lot, a lot of presentations. Please call me if you've got questions on this plan. I'm not gonna get up there.
So I do encourage you.
She's good.
I do encourage you to, um,
Try to trick me once in a while.
Make an appointment or talk to me.
Please make an appointment whenever you want.
Yep.
I'll make the time.
All right, well, if there's something further, we'll call our regular council meeting to order. Pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, one nation, under God. Do you have an invocation?
No, I do not.
All right, roll call, please. Alderperson Murphy.
Present.
Macias.
Present.
Razak.
Present.
Timian.
Present.
Finch.
Present.
McNeil.
Present.
Castro.
Present.
Schmidt.
Present.
Your Honor, I request the approval of Committee of the Whole meeting minutes of January seventh, twenty twenty-five. Appointments made at Committee of the Whole on January twenty-one, twenty twenty-five, and Consent Agenda Item sixteen point one, sixteen point two, and seventeen point two inclusively.
Motion to approve Consent Agenda.
Second.
Motion by Timian, seconded by Razak. Roll call, please. Alderperson Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
McNeil.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, that motion carries.
I make the motion to approve council meeting minutes with amendments from the January seventh, twenty twenty-five council meeting to reflect Alderperson Murphy's vote of aye for Items nineteen point one and nineteen point two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Timian. Roll call, please. Alderperson Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
McNeil.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Great, thank you very much for making that correction. Move to item nineteen. Yes. Non Consent Agenda, second reading, ordinances. Item number nineteen point one, an ordinance amending Chapter twenty-two offenses miscellaneous of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Section two-two dash one-one-zero-five Tobacco Products, Tobacco Accessories, Smoking Herbs, and Alternative Nicotine Products Regarding Tobacco Dealers Licenses to Create Three Categories of Tobacco Dealers Licenses and to Impose a Temporary Moratorium on the Issuance of New Licenses for Class A as defined herein.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Timian, seconded by Finch. Discussion. Mr. Schmidt.
Your Honor, I make a motion to insert the following text as Section Four of the Moratorium on Class A Tobacco Dealers Licenses. Purchaser of an existing business. Nothing in this ordinance shall prevent a purchaser of a business with a valid existing tobacco dealer license to apply for a Class A tobacco dealer's license if the retail establishment is already operating consistently within the definition of a retail tobacco store as of the effective date of this ordinance.
Second.
Motion by, that's, I'm gonna met. I just got lost for a second. All right, that was motion by Schmidt, seconded by Timian. Discussion. Yes.
First, I have emailed the copy of what I just said to the clerk. This was in the conversation relating to what we would have to do with the new applications. It dawned upon me that if a business that had a Class A license was to sell, they would not be able to, under the moratorium as it stood, because there was no allowing for them to do it. They could renew a license, but we didn't have it so that a purchaser could apply for a new license. So that is what I've put forward here, is to add one more section. I borrowed most of that, bringing down from the exception we allowed for a renewal, but describing purchasing situation instead.
Legal counsel, is the correct word, purchasing? Wouldn't it be selling? They're selling the business? As to someone else is purchasing it, but they're not the ones that are the existing business?
Purchaser has to make application.
Right, so I think the other man Schmidt, other person Schmidt, sorry, means to say that a purchaser of a new business or of an existing business
Yeah.
will not be prohibited. That is your motion, right?
And it reads, a purchaser of a business, business with a valid existing tobacco dealer license.
Okay, so it's fine. Thank you for just double checking it because I didn't hear it quite right. Thank you. Other questions or any concerns from the council, Mr. Timian?
Just want to thank Alderperson Schmidt. As we see tonight, this, this is a regular occurrence. So I would hate to have figured this out at point of sale down the line.
Thank you. All right, so we have a motion, an amendment to this motion, right, on the floor? If there's no further discussion, roll call, please, on the amendment. Alderperson Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
McNeil.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, that motion carries. Okay, we're back to nineteen point one as amended. That is on the floor. Anything further? Hearing none, roll call, please. Alderperson Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
McNeil.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, that motion carries. Non Consent Agenda Resolutions. Item number seventeen point one, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a contract with Collins Concrete Limited for Project Number fourteen eighty-two, twenty twenty-five alley reconstruction for the amount of three hundred and sixteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars and eleven cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Macias. Mr. Vitas.
Sure, I'm more than happy to address this. This is an alley located in the, the first ward, actually not far off of Sixth Avenue as it enters the city. And it is on our decks as being in very poor condition. So it's in keeping with our plan that this alley is recommended for approval for repair.
Thank you. Their motion?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Castro.
Your Honor, we already had a motion.
Did I, how did I? Finch and Macias.
Finch.
Good Lord, thank you. It's obviously getting late. Later than we're used to for a while. Anyway, okay, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please. Alderperson Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
McNeil.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, that motion carries. Item number twenty point one, a resolution approving the proposal with Altorfer Power Systems to provide and install one new Caterpillar model, DG one-zero-zero Natural Gas Engine Generator at City Hall, utilizing Sourcewell Contract Number zero-nine-two-two-two-two dash C A T for the amount of one hundred and two thousand six hundred and eight dollars, and authorizing the Assistant Director of Public Works to execute any necessary documents and do all things necessary to implement said purchase and installation.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Mr. Vitas.
Straight up, what we're doing is we're looking at purchasing a joint, joint purchasing related natural gas generator for City Hall to replace an existing unit that one is underpowered and two is, at the end of its useful life. So recommend approval.
Thank you.
And it is budgeted.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please. Alderperson Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
McNeil.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, that motion carries. Item number twenty point two, a resolution authorizing the mayor, city clerk, and city staff to apply to the U.S. Department of Transportation for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five rebuilding American infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity Discretionary Grant Application for the I-74 Riverfront Reimagine Project and authorizing the mayor, city clerk, and staff to do all things necessary to prepare and submit said grant application.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion. Hearing none, a roll call, please. Alderperson Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
McNeil.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, that motion carries. Item number twenty point three, a resolution authorizing the mayor Item number twenty point three, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an economic development and business growth partnership agreement between Grow Quad Cities and the Quad Cities region.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Razak. Mr. Messias.
I will abstain from this as I'm on the board of the Quad Cities Chamber.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple comments.
Yes, Mr. Vitas?
Yeah, if I may, I was not at the last meeting. And I understand there were some questions that came up or arose first. First of all, since the time that you met, the city of Bettendorf did reach out to me, in particular, Mr. Plain, the city administrator, requesting modifications to the document that was presented to you that evening. Those modifications, though there were many of them from his legal, legal department, those I said he could take up when growth is actually established and operating in July. But in terms of purposes of moving this forward, there are three items that that are really insignificant to add, but I want to bring them up to your attention. One, the agreement before you added under the signatory page all of the addresses for the city halls for all of the mayors who are signing this agreement. So kind of not, not, not important issue, but important to them in Bettendorf. There was no reference to Iowa statutory law governing their participation. So they looked to add that at the very beginning of the document, so that was inserted. And then they also inserted the terms sports tourism, because it's important to Bettendorf, it's important to Quad, yeah, Quad, visit Quad Cities. So and sports tourism is, tourism is big money, so inserting that as one of the things that they will look at. Other than that, there were no other significant changes. Costs for the program are as budgeted and previously approved. There's been no increase beyond what was there, so. Any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Ms. Kostopoulos, then, Mr. Schmidt.
Yeah, I just wanna make a point of order, Alderperson Messias, I believe that you cannot abstain, you must recuse yourself.
Recuse, okay, I'll refuse myself from voting.
Right, and do you have to leave?
Yes, I just got an emergency.
Okay, thank you so much.
Sorry, so do I need to wait till the?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Then, Mr. Schmidt.
The changes, Mr. Schmidt, you just described are not reflected here?
They are reflected in the document that was presented to the council, so if you go to the purpose, I gotta go through this real quick.
Well, you've just shared changes.
Yeah, those are the changes that they, that we made to the document, shared with their legal counsel, got their legal counsel to say, yeah, that's what we needed. And and that was it.
I was able to find the addresses addition. I was not able through a search to find the mention of the Iowa piece nor the sports tourism, and I won't vote on something until I've read it.
Do you have it? Let me pull it up. Let me pull it up, I know where it is. Give me one moment. Okay. Keep scrolling.
It was just a search that didn't turn it up, so it might.
Ah, I went past it, hang, here we go, Grow Quad Cities.
Is it in the Council Bill? PDF or an attachment, revised agreement, attachment one, everybody, revised agreement.
Revised agreement, yes. One.
I see Iowa Code, chapter twenty eight E, under number one, purpose.
Correct, that that was what was inserted. All right. Under purpose, correct, so you could see that and it appears, as the mayor pointed out, about three quarters of the way down the page in that section, under purpose. So that was that, that was probably, you know, an error on the part of the attorneys at Lane Waterman, because they are the ones that drafted the original agreement and sent it to the chamber, and there was the chamber that circulated this, so. The agreement that was approved by Rock Island and signed by Rock Island will have to be amended now by the city of Rock Island because they approved it without that that language.
Can you show us the other item of sports tourism, please?
That was added as well, I had Macy do that, one second. Scope.
Yeah, I'm just having trouble finding that.
Yeah, it's a very, very minor insert, and that's why I'm looking. All right. That's not.
Yeah, it it would seem that it should be by, in in number one, purpose, marketing, lead generation, prospect management, and business growth, and sports tourism or something, that seems where it should be, but I don't know where it really is meant to be.
I could open my email here, I could grab it even faster. I know I saw it in here, but now it's a long document, I'm not sure exactly where it went. Exhibit A, I think that's where it went. Okay.
Is it in the bylaws?
It should have been under scope of work, right?
Yeah, I think that's where, I mean, that's where.
Scope of work, in which document?
Exhibit A.
Exhibit A was scope of work, and it should.
I don't see anything called exhibit A.
Yeah, page seven of.
Of the bylaws or of the funding?
Of the funding, I mean, of the exhibit, exhibit one.
Attachment, attachment one.
Yeah.
I didn't see it anywhere in there.
I just lost.
All it says is Grow Quad Cities shall complete the services outlined in the scope of work attached as exhibit A, where is the attachment? Oh, I see what you mean.
Yeah. Yeah.
Scope of work.
Computer's slow. I apologize for not finding it.
It's okay.
Not highlighted, it's in there, I just.
Well, so.
I found it in the attachment that Macy emailed me, it's in number five, scope of services slash work plan. It says the core economic development and business growth programs to be provided by the Grow Quad Cities staff include regional marketing, sports tourism, business attraction, and business retention and expansion.
Yeah, that's not in this attachment here. It's.
Page fifteen or sixteen.
It's number five, under exhibit A, scope of work, number five. That does not show, that wording does not show here, it does not include the sports tourism.
Yeah, it was inserted, shared with them, and they were happy with where it was.
Well, it's not here.
But it's there.
Do you want me to email you all this?
It should be emailed to the council, yeah, if, wait, Mr. Schmidt has a choice, he can vote, not vote on it, or he can vote no.
True.
Or somebody can table it to be, so that we see the actual documents as we're supposed to see them. Mr. Schmidt.
I was gonna ask what, it doesn't delay anything, I mean, it delays the passage, but otherwise.
That's all it does, I mean, it's two words that they wanted inserted, and it was a last minute text, literally, text messages that were coming in at night.
Well, then I believe the agenda item likely should have been pulled and put back in when it was able to be properly briefed.
Okay, so we don't have to be adversarial about it, we can just fix it by using our code, and would you like to table it?
Motion to table.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, wait, do I have to do all in favor or roll call in the regular council meeting? Miss Turner Atkins. Confer. Yeah, roll call. Okay.
And I, you know what, I would, I would add that you might want to give a date.
Yes.
Table until the next meeting.
Motion to table until the next meeting.
Is there a second? For the amendment, seconded by Mr. Razak, thank you. Roll call, please. Alderperson Murphy.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
McNeil.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Move to twenty one point. Item number twenty one point one, an ordinance amending chapter three, signs and advertising of the Mullen Code of Ordinances regarding certain corrections and or clarifications to the sign regulations, including text amendments to various sections in article two, signs, and amending chapter thirty five, zoning and land development of the Mullen Code of Ordinances regarding certain corrections and or clarifications to the zoning and land development regulations, including text amendments to article one, general provisions and administration, article two, development review and procedures, article three, zoning, and article five, site improvement and performance standards.
Motion to approve. Motion to advance the second reading?
Thank you, Mr. Timian. Seconded by Ms. Finch. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please. Alderperson Murphy.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
McNeil.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, motion to advance to second reading, carries. Item number twenty one point two, an ordinance authorizing the city of Mullen to borrow funds from the water pollution control loan program to finance improvements to the South Slope Water Treatment Plant.
Motion to advance the second reading.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please. Alderperson Murphy.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
McNeil.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, motion to advance to second reading, carries, and that's all I have this evening, Your Honor. All right, as you know, I was away last week for four days, learning and taking in a lot of information about a lot of programs that we have said we care about, things like economic empowerment and opportunity, housing, resiliency around flooding, infrastructure, et cetera, et cetera. Also, I was able to find out from Durbin's office that the federal funds to the tune of one hundred and seventy five million dollars that have been rolling over for the train were granted to us for another year and a half by the Federal Railroad Administration. Durbin's office was a little sad that we didn't get five years out of that, I said, that's okay, because if you gave them five years, it would definitely take another five years to get this done. It is unfortunate that the gap in funding is still quite large. This is a project that we really, really do need for economic development, workforce development, et cetera. So we will just continue to keep trying with our partners at the state and the federal government. I also lobbied other congressional representatives from other parts of Illinois to get on board and help Mr. Sorenson in any way that he could be helped, because this is important to connectivity in the whole state and economic development in the whole state. So that, those were helpful visits as well. It did, the last session is kind of relevant to my comment about not being adversarial from the days. It was a session about improving governance culture or governing culture. And I think I applaud this council for, for the most part, recently or in the recent past, being able to be a high functioning board. We're able to share our ideas, we're able to disagree, not vote unanimously all the time. But sometimes we do have to think about our norms, and while we don't have a signed agreement on behavioral norms, some, some councils do that. We have our code, and our code says we don't engage in personalities, which means we don't directly attack someone, especially by name. We also have regulations on how many times we get to speak to regular items on the regular council meeting to help manage the flow and so that no one voice dominates the conversation. So I just, at this point in time, I thought since I had a session with that, I'd just remind ourselves that, you know, we, we all strive to be professional up here. We have a lot of new staff, we want to make sure that our council norms continue to help keep us as a high functioning board. And I'd be happy to have some one on ones with all of you as, 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 over the next couple months. Some of you I've obviously worked with longer than others, and I don't always get to talk to each of you about what you care about and what you want to see coming forward. So I'm happy to do that, and I know you want to do that with our staff as well, so I just wanted to put that out there, especially as we work our way up to a new strategic plan. Okay? That is all for me at this moment in time.
I have nothing.
Mr. Razak?
Thank you, nothing.
Mr. Timian?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Yesterday, Alderperson Murphy and I were at the King Center for the Martin Luther King Awards for the year, and we had the privilege of hearing from Minnie Jean Brown Tricky, who was a member of the Little Rock Nine, the first integrated high school in Little Rock, Arkansas. And I just want to express my appreciation for the community to give all of us the opportunity to hear from history makers nationally and to remind us that, and I think one of the biggest takeaways was that history needs to be sought out because we don't always get it delivered to us. And it was just a really, I think, a wonderful event, and it was covered in the paper and on the news. But I also enjoyed sitting next Alderperson Murphy as we got to enjoy it together.
Yes, we did.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Castro?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Schmidt?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Nothing.
Any other staff updates? All right. Any further public comment? Hearing none, I do believe we have executive session.
Your Honor, I make a motion that council convenes an executive session for the purpose of discussion of appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance dismissal of specific employees, five L S, I L S, oh gosh, I L C S one twenty slash two C one, property acquisition dash five, I L C S one twenty slash two C five, pending probable or imminent litigation dash five, I L C S one twenty slash two C eleven, review of executive session minutes dash five, I L C S one twenty slash two C twenty one.
Second.
All right, motion by Murphy, seconded by Timian, roll call, please. Alderperson Murphy.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
McNeil.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, that motion carries.